Senior pro am, Darren Clark was my pro.
Ah.
Nice guy.
I thought the other guy was... Is it Troy?
Troy, KJ. All right, now I know it's time. You guys may think I run this, Christina runs this.
We all know that.
Okay, I'll call the meeting to order, we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Whenever we do the pledge, I remember being in elementary school and we used to do that every day and sort of, pretty cool that we can still have a country where we can do that, so appreciate everyone doing that. Roll call?
Clark?
Here.
David?
Here.
Fish?
Here.
Jorgensen?
Here.
Call?
Here.
Parliament?
Here.
Mayor Heinem?
Here. Welcome, Dave. Okay, we've had several meetings. Well, first of all, I guess we better approve the agenda for tonight.
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion, second to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Minutes from September 2nd, September 7th, and September 9th. We have a motion and a second to approve the three meetings. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have a number of claims. Are there any questions on any of those? Talked about them. If not, I would look for a motion to approve the claims.
Move to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve the claims. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consent calendar.
Nothing.
Nothing? Don't see anything. Okay. Well, welcome to our visitors. We appreciate your coming and want to see if there's anyone that wants to speak to us tonight. We do limit it to five minutes per person, so... But the mic would be open. Okay. Public hearing, first reading of ordinance 641 rezoning of Encore Park property.
I laid out a map for you to take a look at, a little more specific on what's getting rezoned in this application.
So, planning and zoning has a due pass?
Right. I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the first reading of ordinance 641 rezoning Encore Park property. Any discussion, comments?
I was just gonna say that I thought it was good to hear at PNC when they spoke about having that second entrance come in by Lancer for some of that construction traffic. I know there was some concern by people out there for the lack of sidewalks and people walking in the street. So I'm happy to hear that they're doing that.
Good. Obviously, for the city of Brandon, it's a project that will is needed and will be good. So we have a motion and a second to approve the reading. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The 2020 audit report.
So on the way up here this evening, I heard on the radio that the company that makes yardsticks are no longer making them. Not making them any longer. So...
We're a little slow, so we... But I got it the second time.
So in your packet, I believe you have this dra... What's it called, the draft? The report was sent up to the state and we got approval late Friday afternoon. I've got the actual report. Christina's got it over there for... But there was no changes from the draft to the original. Page one of the report is the independent auditor report. This is an unmodified opinion, which is the highest opinion you can receive on your financial statements. Basically, the letter says that the financial statements that are presented are fairly presented in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles accepted by the United States of America. From pages three to thirteen is the management discussion and analysis. Christina puts this together, it's kind of a thumbnail overlook of the 2020 year. Financial highlights, overview of some financial statements. It gives a comparative governmental and business-type funds for 2019 and 2020. That's on page six. Page seven is a couple of graphs that show where the revenue and expenses are coming from and being spent from, out of. And then, the revenue and expenses on page eight are comparative statements there. Capital assets are on page nine and the outstanding debt on page 10, along with detail of each of each debt and obligation. And that goes up through twelve. And then page thirteen is economic factors and you can contact the contact in the city for the... If anybody wants to look at the audit, you have the report there to look at. Page fourteen is statement of net position. The governmental funds, they're all the funds that the city of Brandon has, including land, work-in-process, equipment, net of depreciation, and debt. And the business-type activities are also listed there on page fourteen. Page fifteen, we have the revenues and expenses, which goes to page seventeen. And there's a reconciliation on page eighteen. Nineteen and twenty are the breakdown of the revenues and expenses through page twenty-one. And there's a reconciliation on page twenty-two. Then the enterprise funds on twenty-three, the balance sheet there for the water, sewer, golf, and the non-major expenditure funds, which are back on page fifty-six and fifty-seven. And then the cash flows are on page twenty-six and twenty-seven. Page twenty-eight, we have the notes of significant accounting policies. Talks about the different types of funds you have. The governmental funds and the proprietary fund, the basis of accounting, deposits and capital assets, measurement focus. This goes on through to page thirty-five, talks about the fund balances. And the different fund balances on page thirty-six. The designated, I should say, non-spendable and restricted and committed funds, along with the unassigned. The note two is the implementation of the new accounting standard statement. Gatsby number eighty-seven about leases. Note three talks about the violations of financial-related legal and contractual provision. The... We had the one there where the police department had overspent their budget and that also shows as a finding. Back, it'll show up on page seventy-one. Deposits and restricted cash investments on page thirty-seven. Receivables, payables, inventories, property taxes. Page thirty-nine is the changes in capital assets for the governmental and the enterprise funds. And note ten talks about the changes of long-term debt. Here again, we have a, on page forty-one, a detailed description of all of those debts. Page forty-two shows the amounts that are due in the next five years, and then there's five-year increments. Note eleven is the lease note. Note twelve is the water waste, wastewater agreement with the city of Sioux Falls. Note talk... Thirteen talks about the restricted net positions and inter-fund transfers on note fourteen. And note fifteen is the pension plan, which goes on and on and on to page forty-seven. We have the risk management. And on page forty-eight is the significant contingency litigation, which you were not involved in any litigation. And page forty-nine is budget to actual and forty-nine is the... Page forty-nine has the revenue and page fifty is the expenses. So if you look quarter of the way down under police, you'll see that you spent more than you budgeted. And it's not a material amount, but it's one of those things that before the end of the year, there should be a supplement budget to the police department or whatever department has overspent their budget amount.
So was that six thousand, six seventy-three?
Yeah. So the very last line there, if you notice, there's original and then there's a final. Original budget is the one you approved and then the final is with any other supplements that might have come in during, throughout the year. So through that, through your budget process, you thought your fund balance was going to be three million, six hundred ninety. And it actually your actual amount was eight million, three hundred seventy-one. So your fund balance is four million, six hundred eighty-one thousand dollars better than what you thought you were gonna be. And the same with the street maintenance fund, is the budget to actual there. There you thought the... But your fund balance was gonna be two hundred ninety-four, it actually ended up to be seven hundred twenty, so your fund balance is four hundred twenty-five thousand dollars better off than where you thought you were gonna be.
So Dwight, what's the rule of thumb on the fund balance on the general fund? How much we should be holding? It looks pretty high to me, that eight million.
Well, here again, it depends what you've got going, you know, coming up, I guess, you know, that too, if there's some big project coming up. So you had a million three that was transferred in. And... But then there also, there was five hundred seventy-nine thousand that was transferred out.
Is there a rule of thumb, like half of what your general fund spending is, something like that?
Well, it used to be like twenty percent of your cash. But let's see, your cash is about thirteen million. So it would be it'd be about sixty percent there, so it may be a little high, but they used to penalize you for having too much, but I don't think they do that anymore.
Yeah, I just think we need to watch that and we've talked about it before, but there's no sense collecting that money and not using it.
Yeah. Page fifty-two, they talk about the budget process, the, it's kind of a calendar of events there. And on page fifty-three is the is part of the pension note again. So if you really want to get into that, that'd be some good reading material about the pension. Page fifty-four, it talks about the South Dakota retirement system. And then there's some other notes on page fifty-five that talks about the actuary, assumption changes, method changes, all that good stuff that most people don't understand. The non-major governmental funds, I'd mentioned. If you look back on page fourteen, nope. Seventeen. Sixteen and seventeen. There's a the fifth column is non-major programs and that's this is a breakdown of those non-major programs on page fifty-seven and fifty-six and fifty-seven. The... On page fifty-six also, there's special revenue. And there's a breakdown of those funds on page fifty-nine. And the revenue and expenses on special revenue is, on page fifty-seven is a breakdown of that. I'm sorry. The balance sheets on fifty-eight and the revenues on fifty-nine. Page fifty-nine. And the debt service balance sheet there is on page sixty and sixty-one. There was one of them, one of the Hemlock Boulevard Debt Service Fund, zeroed out, so there was only one fund left on that, Debt Service Fund of the Convention Center. And then the capital projects, non-major funded, is the Rushmore Area Reconstruction Projects. And those are on page sixty-three, a list of Ironwood, Rushmore Project Fund, the Rushmore Area Reconstruction Fund, and then the total there on page sixty-three. Page sixty-four is the schedule of federal awards that was, you've received. And because this is over seven hundred and fifty thousand, you're required to have a uniform guidance audit. It used to be called an A-133, but the uniform guidance is all the auditing funds. We ought to look at these funds during the audit to make sure that the rules and regulations of those funds are being followed. And there's, page sixty-five is our report on those internal control over those financial reportings and then the compliance and other matters. And we found that you're in compliance with all the rules and regulations of those funds. And then page sixty-seven is the independent report on each major federal program and report on internal control. Here again, we look at the same, basically the same as the letter before, which was non-major. So we have internal controls and compliance there also. And then on page sixty-nine is the prior audit finding, where there was no written prior audit, federal compliance audit finding. And there were no current prior or audit finding to the report. Page seventy is the summary of independent audit results. You know, we've issued an unqualified opinion, we found there were no material weaknesses, because you haven't placed some good controls. And under the federal awards, we look at those we do extra auditing in those that CFDA number twenty-one point oh one nine, which is South Dakota Bureau of Finance and Management, coronavirus relief fund. And it also talks about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the award program that make this a uniform guidance audit. And then on page seventy-one, we talk about that overfin... Overspending as a federal, no written current federal compliance, but there is the expenditures were paid in excess of appropriation, but like I said, it was not a material amount. But we recommend that you do kind of watch the spending of those line items, make sure that supplement budgets are added to, get rid of any of those types of comments. And then you, page seventy-two is the corrective action plan. So that is the report. I know you, I... You're still doing checklist each month and reconciling or somebody reviewing the reconciliation. It's always good, don't stop doing that, because it's always good to have not only one set of eyes, but six, seven. Sometimes things pop up that somebody doesn't notice and it's, it could end up being a sizable amount later on. You have to remember that fraud happens every day, so... Any questions?
So did that overspending on the police department just get away for us and we forgot to do the supplemental budget?
A lot of it was adjusting entries, so I was fine with adjusting entries and once I do those at the end of the year, well, I do them more February, March. It turned it, about sixty-six hundred.
Well, I want to thank you for getting this done in a timely manner. I know that that hasn't always been the case. Years ago, not since you've been around, so thank you for doing all that, Christina.
I would echo Christina, this is really a good report and it's hard in a short period of time. I've tried to read through some of this and I don't have an accounting background, but yet, when you're dealing with state government, federal government, and keeping track and getting us to this point, thank you.
Sometimes the eye glaze over when you look at too much of this stuff, so...
Thank you, good job.
Thanks for coming, Dwight.
Yep, thank you.
Need a motion to accept the audit.
I'll make a motion.
A motion to accept and a second to accept the audit? Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Can we get the copies? Some of these sideways pages were pretty hard to...
Oh, yeah, they're here after, yep.
Yeah, there were a few of them in there sideways, I was good for my math. Okay.
Just got it delivered, so you can have one after the meeting.
Okay. All business, we have second reading of ordinance 635 off-street parking amendment. Have a motion and a second to approve the off-street parking. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Second reading of ordinance 636 zero setback amendment. I know there was some discussion on this last time. Have a motion and a second to approve the reading. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And second reading of ordinance 639 2022 budget.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion and a second to approve the budget. Any questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Standing committee reports, the golf course. We have an employee to hire.
Correct, Manny Greber in the committee room.
Motion to approve.
A motion and a second to approve the hiring. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Flood repair project phase two.
We entered into a design-build contract with Landscapes Unlimited, geez. This spring? Last year. Been a while. Phase one was the construction or repairs to the irrigation system at the golf course that was accomplished last year. Phase two, we were gonna hold off and move forward with phase two only after FEMA had obligated their funds to the project. Estimated cost of phase two repairs, which includes reshaping bunkers as well as repairs to fairways and a couple of greens, or tees. Six hundred and seventy-nine thousand, two sixty-four is the estimated cost from Landscapes Unlimited. FEMA has obligated five hundred and nine thousand, seventy-five percent of the project. The state is currently considering their ten percent. And then our share of that would be a hundred and one, eight ninety.
I had my first chance to golf there last Monday and the improvements on phase one are, looked really good. Thank you, Lisa, for supper. You bought, I don't know if you knew that, but anyway. So I think phase one has really gone well. The bunkers are in need?
Yep.
I visited several.
We'll try to make them easier.
Thank you.
So we need authorization to move forward with phase two of the project.
Motion to approve.
A motion and a second to approve the moving forward of the phase two flood repair project. Any questions or discussion? If not, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Parks and Rec, we have a work report there on page one thirty-nine. Still mowing the grass, I'm sure? Ah, keeps growing. Doesn't stop this year, it seems like. Twenty twenty-one pool revenue report. Really look good. I'm assuming that's better than normal?
Yes.
Yes.
Quite a bit?
How's that compare to the last couple, three years? Let's go twenty nineteen, let's say.
I want to say it was low five hundreds of memberships that were sold. I mean, we can't really go off of revenue because we change rates. So you'd have to look at memberships. So I mean, I can get those numbers, but I don't have them right now.
Do those memberships include the ones that were given to the teachers?
Yeah, that top number, yeah.
So to form more accurate, we probably would want to take off one sixty-five? Would that be? I mean, some of them are probably buying anyways, but knowing that they were free, you know what I'm saying, to kind of give us a true one?
Okay. I'm sorry. Seasonal staff, which one forty-one. We have a motion and a second to approve the hiring. Any questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Aspen Park Paya application number one. Have a motion and a second to approve this? Any questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public safety administration resolution twenty twenty-one setting storm sewer water utility rates.
These rates that are included in the resolution are the ones that AE2S presented at the last council meeting, how they compute residential and non-residential properties.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution twenty twenty-one setting the city storm water utility rates. Questions? Comments? If not, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
so that for license fee, it's eleven thousand, forty-eight dollars currently. The initial application fee and any renewal application fees was left to be set by resolution. Those, at least in the resolution, are set at five thousand dollars.
So we're changing this from eleven to five?
No, no. The license fee itself is eleven thousand, forty-eight. The application fee is five thousand. So.
And that's five thousand to the city and five thousand to the state?
I believe there's an application fee of five thousand to the state as well.
Is that correct, Lisa?
I don't remember what the state said there is at, but.
Pretty sure in the meeting we had with the rest of the mayors, that was what was stated. So we have a motion and a second to approve the.
Not a second, yes, a second.
I'm sorry, did you second? Yeah, you did. Yeah, I thought so. Twenty-one twenty-one, setting the medical cannabis fees. Any other questions or discussion?
Yeah, speaking of this topic, Lisa, had they changed anything at the state that our ordinance would need to be addressed?
Nothing material.
Nothing material? Okay.
Because this really actually goes into effect here fairly soon, correct? October fourth?
The fourth.
I believe. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. First reading of ordinance number six forty-two, setting off-sale liquor license fee. Presently, the fee is what?
Five hundred dollars.
I would make a motion that we accept this with an amended fifty cent per capita instead of the dollar.
I'll second it just so for discussion first.
We have a motion and a second to amend this to fifty, fifty cents per capita.
So it would, instead of eleven thousand, it would be half of that, so fifty-five hundred. I just struggle with us saying it's eleven thousand to come to Brandon when they can go to Sioux Falls for five hundred dollars. And I get that they may be able to afford it, but I don't, I don't know that that extra fifty-five hundred dollars in our pocket is, is something that we want to make a statement over. I'd like to attract business and be more flexible on that. I think fifty, I mean, we're still going to be ten times what our neighbor is at fifty-five hundred. I think going up to eleven thousand is just too much. And it's not like we have a lot of licenses that this is going to just cash roll in.
Good, good points.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay. And we talked about this earlier. I'm okay with just going to the half cent because it's quite a jump, so I would concur with Dan.
Any other questions, comments? So we do have a motion and a second. Jack?
Just going back to the cannabis ones, we've kind of said from the beginning of the cannabis regs that we wanted to set it similar to alcohol, so I, I'm, I'm still good with the dollar per capita. I don't have a huge, strong opinion one way or another, but I would prefer the buck, I think, at this point.
I, I would.
And just so that you know, here, I would also support one dollar.
Thank you, Dave.
Just as a reminder, on the cannabis, we're a lot less expensive for people to come to Brandon for cannabis, but we're going to be more expensive than our neighbors for them to come to Brandon for alcohol. And this is off sale, so we're talking, you know, a grocery store or something like that. I, I personally view that a little bit different than, than dispensary for cannabis.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second to approve amending to fifty cents per capita. Maybe you want to take a roll call vote, please?
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Call?
Nay.
Parliament?
Nay.
Mary didn't get to vote.
First time I get to vote, finally. Been here four months.
Larry didn't get to vote hardly ever.
Really?
Twelve, sixteen years.
Feeling pretty special, then?
Yeah.
Well, I, my feelings would be, I'm a, I'm a strong proponent of being competitive in retail and I, I really do believe that the, you know, when you, when you have Sioux Falls at five hundred dollars, is, is that where we want to be at eleven thousand dollars? I think there's some sense of compromise that we're still going to be more expensive. I would vote yea to amend it to fifty cents.
It does feel, it does feel.
Next is the tax abatements. Is there any discussion there necessary?
Just a quick question.
Yes.
In the background or in the discussion, says something about we'll need a resolution to remove the moratorium?
Yeah, we'll do that after it becomes effective.
Okay. Okay. I thought we need to, that sounds conservative though.
Yeah, so we'll do it probably at the first meeting in November.
Okay.
I believe we have, are these tax abatements?
They're recommended by the county.
Applications and recommend?
Yeah, they, they go to the county first. The county equalization director reviews them. These are for disabled veteran, I believe, so it's just they get a property break.
And they're, were, they were recommended approval?
Correct.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion and a second to approve the two tax abatements. Any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is letter of support for Encore Park rail project.
Hague Construction is, is developing Encore Park as part of that on the north side of the railroad tracks. They're looking at constructing an industrial park. They would like to construct a siding into that area. Ellison Eastern has, is working with Hague Construction and they would like to, are planning on submitting a grant application for the construction of that rail spur. They're looking for a letter of support from the city.
Move that we approve that letter of support.
I'll second it, but I also will add that Dan Kipley from Ellison Eastern is here, but I think he wants to say a couple words. Got appropriate timing here?
Sure.
I will, Jack, just because I like you. Thank you for bringing this forward. We're working diligently on getting our, it's an STC grant is what this is, and that's a special circum- transportation circumstance grant is what the, the hedge companies are applying for. And Jack is an expert on this. He's forgot more about this than I'll ever know, but those monies come forward to the state of South Dakota because South Dakota is one of three states that does not have any passenger rail service. So through the federal program, South Dakota, Wyoming and Alaska are able to obtain some funding that is set aside mostly for short rail lines and special economic development projects. We do know that Balfour is applying for a grant for their industrial park that they have out there and they are expanding that because a customer needs more, more siding space. We're anticipating that, we have a couple of users that have expressed interest and are supporting this project as well. They've not made any firm commitments, but again, with this, timing wise, you have to understand that this application goes in, it will take six months for approval if everything goes right. Funds probably won't be coming back into Brandon until twenty twenty-three. Again, that's how slow government works. And so we're hoping that, that all this goes together, but it's approximately about a three million dollar project with the sightings and the spurs and everything that would take place and if all the weather cooperates and, so I would expect that twenty-three, twenty-four is when this will be up and running. So be happy to answer any questions, any, anyone has.
You know Jack's going to ask you one.
Of course I have to ask something. What's planned out there? What will the, as far as what's planned, do you have a, might not have a preliminary drawing if they, what they'll be doing, Jack, is to, on the north side of the, the main line, they're going to be having two spurs come off of that and go to the north. And this initial grant application, they're only going to be finishing one spur and then at that, and then they'll have a runaround. And then we're also adding additional siding so that we can bring in more cars and move those cars around because we anticipate that once the first one gets, that side of the park gets filled, then the second siding would go in and then another, as you know, how the STC grants, there's always some money trickling in, that they hope they can apply for another grant in a couple of years when the, the demand is there to finish the second spur.
So they parallel with the main line or?
No, they'll, they'll go, they'll go up to the north and then we'll have a runaround siding so we can move, push the cars back and forth. So, I, yeah.
How many feet of track? Anticipated, you know that?
In this grant, there's going to be probably about six thousand feet when you do the runarounds and the spur going in. So, and there's several switches involved in the grading, all the ballast, all the engineering, environmental studies, all those things.
I have a question. So does this line then will go through in town Brandon or does it go? I'm not, I'm not familiar.
The main line will end up going through Brandon, but that's another, another phase that we have to repair the bridge that's just right outside of Brandon. So that was part of another grant project.
Okay.
So that's still two or three years out, so you're, it's going to be still several years before you'll see train movements through town. The other grant that is scheduled, that's, that's going to last five to seven years before we get the rehab between Valley Springs and Brandon. So it all takes time.
Any idea when that one's going to start? Or authorized?
We're still, we're still negotiating with the BNSF, believe it or not.
Over manly?
Yeah. That's getting very close, but every time we think we're close, someone else goes on vacation. That's what happens.
Thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
Yep. I know we had a motion to approve.
And a second.
And a second. Railroad, railroad man a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next on the, we have a purchase agreement for three oh three East Elm, which is just to our north, I believe.
Just to the north of the party lot. Became available on the market. List price is a hundred and ten, or the price is a hundred and ten thousand. No earnest money, anticipated closing date of October eighteenth. If you, if the council approves the purchase agreement.
I would make a motion to approve. Second.
A motion and a second to approve the purchase of the housing just to the north of the present police station and city hall.
Can I just make a comment? Yeah. I would really encourage city staff to look. I know if we're not going to use the house, I know CCOG moves a lot of houses at the contractors. I would really encourage to look at that or, I don't know how that's done, but to find out if somebody could come in and possibly at their own cost, not the cost of the city at all, but have the house moved if we could potentially salvage it and they can give it to someplace else. I would, I would encourage the staff, if you guys can look into that, because I think.
We've done one before.
Have you done that too? Yeah, because that would be nice if it could go back somehow.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the purchase agreement, three oh three East Elm. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I think that will be really good for the city at some point in time. Glad to see that working. We have a streets work report and then South Dakota Department fifty-three eleven and fifty-three ten compliance report on the transit system. One seventy-one of your program.
A good report. DOT found no findings.
Great.
This was a, what exactly? On our transit system?
Transit, yeah.
On our bus system? Yep, my bad.
Oh, that's great. Okay, is there anything we need to do with that?
No, that's information.
Okay. Transit system amendment with South Dakota Department of Transportation agreement.
We've got the management agreement with Rocks first.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed one.
We have too much transit stuff.
Man, I'm still on the trains and now we're on transit. Okay, I'm sorry. Transit management agreement, R O C S.
Yep, Rocks is, is who we contract with to operate the transit system. If you remember Scott, the same gentleman that did it with.
InterLakes.
Thank you, InterLakes, is now doing it with Rocks. Management agreement's there, it's the same one that we currently have with them, including the price.
So it's a different person, but same basic?
Same, same organization, same person.
Okay.
We're just re-upping it.
Just re-upping.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agreement with Rocks. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now the other transit system amendment with South Dakota Department of Transportation. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Water and sewer water tower project, response to our citizens' complaints and concerns. I know we've been working on that. Brian, you want to?
Correct. I included in the packet a letter from city attorney Marso to A and B Contracting and Stockwell Engineers regarding the concerns that were raised at the last council meeting. There's minutes from following meeting, which was Thursday, September ninth, that we had with, with those two organizations and then A and B Contracting's response to the concerns. We have not heard back from OSHA yet, do not anticipate hearing anything back on their inspections and review. They said it could take up to six weeks.
Has it been the last couple of weeks? Has there been more concerns or has it kind of gone quiet?
I have not heard any more concerns and they didn't finish the, the work that was in the right of way though, so they should have the road open and cleared and no equipment parked on the side of the road.
I drove out there Sunday just to look, knowing we'd probably talk about it again today and, you know, Sunday probably isn't necessarily, it's not an active day, but it looked like you could get to wherever you needed to get. Again, I think obviously we're concerned about safety and, and there's going to be disruption, we, we know that, and I think there's going to have to continue to be some give and take, but appreciate the effort Tammy and Lisa have given us, our city attorney in, in engineering. I think they've worked hard with the contractors.
Any more staging that needs to happen up there? Any more equipment and parts and pieces?
Not really staging, but once they start pouring concrete, there's going to be a lot of concrete trucks through there.
Okay.
And they're going to have to use the road, so there will be some more congestion there and they probably won't be finishing that until mid.
We have not heard back from OSHA yet. Do not anticipate hearing anything back on their inspections and review. They said it could take up to six weeks.
Has it been the last couple of weeks? Has there been more concerns, or has it kind of gone quiet?
I have not heard any more concerns. They did finish the, the work that was in the right of way, though. So they should have the road open and cleared and no equipment parked on the side of the road.
I drove out there Sunday just to look, knowing we'd probably talk about it again today. And, you know, Sunday probably isn't necessarily, it's not an active day, but it looked like you could get to wherever you needed to get. Again, I think obviously we're concerned about safety and, and there's going to be disruption. We, we know that, and I think there's going to have to continue to be some give and take. But appreciate the effort Tammy and Lisa have given us, our city attorney in engineering. I think they've worked hard with the contractors.
Any more staging that needs to happen up there? Any more equipment and parts and pieces?
Not really staging, but once they start pouring concrete, there's going to be a lot of concrete trucks through there.
Okay.
And they're going to have to use the road, so there will be some more congestion there. And they probably won't be finishing that until mid-October. So quite a few weeks yet of the construction project.
I think we just need to stay diligent in keeping them on task to keep a passable roadway.
Yeah, we don't anticipate closing the roadway, so there will be a lot of traffic back and forth, but they will be able to get through. And our contractor's been pretty good to work with, so.
Since we put him on notice or prior?
They've been pretty good the whole time. There's been those small issues that have definitely been addressed and.
As long as they know they're on, on notice and will continually.
Next item on the agenda is the Rushmore Project Pay Application. Have that in front of you.
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Motion and a second to approve the pay application for the Rushmore Project. Any discussion, questions? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. New business, Brian?
None.
Tell me where.
Do you have the financials for August in your packet, including the fund balance report as well as the golf course profit-loss statement and revenues and expenses?
Do we need executive session? A motion, a second to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you for coming. That might be our fastest meeting since I've been here. Boy, good night. I got to vote.